Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Years, we had a nice hour together this morning before pre-council. And they kept me on my toes. It was, uh, they were a little quiet at the beginning, but by the end of that, I couldn't get out of there because we were taking pictures and answering questions. So it was a great group. I'd like to recognize them here today. Thanks for being here. Just so people know what BOLD is, it's under Mr. Val McPherson.
I've had the great pleasure to get to know. It's a civic engagement fellowship. It's an exchange program focused on developing a robust network of young leaders in the Baltics who can create innovative solutions to civic engagement issues in their communities and develop bonds between the youth of Bosnia and Herzegovina, Montenegro, Serbia, and the U.S. So it really is a great honor to have you here today. On another announcement, um, it's Labor Day coming up, so please respect the dignity of all the workers out there. It's gonna be hot again, so feel free to throw water or Gatorade out for your mailman or the guys picking up the trash. And last but not least, I wanted to recognize a pioneer that passed away within the last week, a great photojournalist reporter by the name of Dave Hamer. And I see John Chapman here today from W O W. John, our condolences go out to the W O W T family and to Roger, who is a great partner of yours. Just a little history of Dave that I learned, besides watching him on TV as a kid behind the scenes, he was a pioneer and a legend. He was the husband of 61 years to Verla, who passed away in 2013. And Dave taught many years at UNO, as his son Roger has followed his footsteps, not only as a great photojournalist, but also a teacher of the next generation. Dave also was one of the first, or the first local reporter to cover the Vietnam War. I think it was four segments he did. And he also covered the Gulf War. And he was a great storyteller. And I know from listening to a couple of the videos and articles I read on him, there is always a beginning, middle, and an end of each story. I think he drilled that in pretty good to the young journalists, that that was the way to do things. So I want to again offer my condolences to everybody in the community of communications and the Hamer family. And as they say on NBC Sunday mornings, they got great segments of people that have lived great lives. They call it a life well-lived. And I certainly think that Mr. Dave Hamer is a pioneer and a legend and a family man fits that bill today, and we want him to rest in peace and condolences to his family. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Adam Clark.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. Look forward to your input on our many items. I encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. Number six today is an item we delayed last week, and we have done some subsequent work on, but we were hoping to have the applicant speak to today by Zoom. And we're expecting her by Zoom yet, but she's not here yet. So there's no more time on this license to delay it any further, but what I would suggest for now, if my colleagues are okay with that, is that we move item number six to the end of the liquor license agenda to see if she might still dial in. And we start with item seven.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Cassidy's Wine and Spirits located at 6610 South 168th Street, Suite 3 and 4.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Sunil Kumar Mohandas, and I rented this space on 168th and Harrison to start a liquor store. I do have a 12-year experience in this field. I've been owning and operating Husker Fruit Store on South 24th Street. And I hope everybody will approve my application.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
I'd like to move for approval, waiving part rule number seven.
There's a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you, council members.
Well, now move back to item number six.
She's not currently on.
She's still connecting. We'll go to item number eight.
Item eight, to consider a Class C liquor license for Nolli's Pizzeria located at 6307 Center Street, Suite 101.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is the latest Nolli's to come into the Omaha market. If you haven't been, you should be sure and get there. It's really good. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good afternoon. Thanks for coming down. Is this the third or fourth location they're opening up?
It's the third in the metro. There's one in Sarpy County as well.
Okay, so there's one on 40th and Blackstone, and then this is the second one. Both these are my district. And if our friends, before they leave out of town, they want to go get some good pizza, Nolli's on 40th and Farnummer, 63rd, and Center's gonna be open up soon, I would encourage you to go there. So thanks for being here today, and I make a motion to support this, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item nine, to consider a Class C liquor license for Imart located at 9010 Ford Street.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please. Come on down. Just your name and address for the record there?
Hello, everyone. I'm Karna Gurum from Gurum Brothers, Imart, and it's 9010 Ford Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Just here to answer questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 10, to consider a Class C liquor license for UNO Caniglia Field located at 6201 Maverick Plaza is communication opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Crystal Reynolds. My address is 17504 County Road P-19 in Herman, Nebraska. I'm here with Sodexo at UNO.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is it Crystal or Kristy?
Crystal.
Crystal. Good afternoon. Thanks for being here today. I had a conversation with Victoria, and she said you would be here. We got some concerns from the neighbors in respect to the Class C license on this. And if you talked to Victoria, are you agreeable to amend that to have it to reflect an I license for this and not a C?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be for Caniglia. I have two on here again, but that would be for Caniglia Field, yes.
Okay, so this is for item number 10?
Yes.
Okay, so that you're in agreement to amend that to have it be an I?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that. I know the neighbors will be a little happier for that. I was wondering, what are the hours of operation gonna be typically?
Um, Caniglia Field, we will only be operating when there is a soccer game. So the latest we will be there is 10 o'clock at night, and the earliest game we've had so far is 1 o'clock on a Sunday.
1 o'clock PM?
AM. Yeah, PM, sorry.
Okay, afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the security like at the facilities there when there's alcohol served and these events are going on?
The gates are all closed, and there is public safety there to not allow the alcohol to leave.
Okay, and there are obviously underage drinking on all college campuses is a concern. The public safety officers will be able to enforce what the laws are and make sure there's no underage drinking, and they're IDing people that are coming in and out?
We ID everybody, no matter how old they are. So if they're not 21, they don't get a wristband.
Okay. Then I appreciate you sharing that with me on number 10, item 10 for, to change that from a C to an I. So I will make a motion, Mr. President, to amend that from a C to an I, to support that.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Second.
Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 11, to consider a Class I K liquor license for UNO Student Union located at 6203 Dodge Street is communications and opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Chris Reynolds. My address is 17504 County Road P-19, Herman, Nebraska. I'm here with Sodexo at UNO.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Couple more questions, same thing basically. Is this gonna be year-round?
Yes.
Okay. And the security for those events?
Um, it will be for this particular place in the ballroom in the Milo Bell Student Center, and we will have security as needed.
Um, what are the hours gonna be for events that are gonna be there?
They don't start before 1:00 or before 5:00, and they're done by 11 o'clock.
5:00 PM to 11:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did I miss anything else on that? We good? Okay, I just wanna make sure, because there was, there was different communications coming in on that. So I appreciate you coming down and just getting that on the record. Obviously, UNO wants to be a good neighbor to the neighborhood association and the people that live around there. And even your councilman kinda walks through there on three or four occasions a week, and I think one of us takes their bike up there, too. So there'll be a lot of council eyes going through that beautiful park and through the campus. So thanks for being here today. I'll make a motion to support this, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 12, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Cinco de Mayo, Omaha, for a festival at 2406 N Street and South 24th Street on September 15th, 16th, and 17th with music until 11:59 PM on September 15th.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please. I saw Marcus walk in just in time. Yep. Good timing.
Yeah, good afternoon. So, yeah, so this year, we're doing the annual...
And just your name and address for the record?
It's, uh, Marcos Mora, 4014 Arbor Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68105. So we're doing our annual festival down in South Omaha in partnership with the Mexican, Guatemalan, and Salvadorian consulate. So this year, normally we go till 11 o'clock, but this year, because they're doing a special ceremony on Friday, they're asking for an extra hour. Uh, this is pretty historic that we're actually doing something with the Guatemalan and Salvadorian consulate since they are new. Those populations are growing. So usually it's just the Mexican consulate, but now we're doing three consulates, so they're spreading out their activity. So that's why this year we're asking for an extra hour.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak?
Rebecca Badiantos-Patlin, 3305 E Street. That was my cousin. I think this is wonderful. These events that we have in South Omaha bring a lot of community, a lot of money back to the city of Omaha. And so I just wanted to say, let's go.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents on number 12? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for African Cocktail Lounge located at 7215 Blondo Street.
This item was postponed from the August 22nd council meeting. The vote can be today. We'll recognize the applicant by Zoom here, Coco Davis. We'll get you off mute here in a second. Okay, I think we're having difficulty connecting via audio, but I'm pretty sure I can handle this as she attempts to dial in here. This is a license that was in my district and is in my district, and we delayed for one week. Given the sensitive nature of the location, many will call it as the old Mount Fuji many years ago, and the Mai Tai Lounge underneath. But then since then, has had some issues with some entities we were not in support of. The name of that establishment was Candy's, and it was essentially a bottle club that the city was not in favor of, and eventually did remove from the site, or have it at least go out of business there. Since then, it's been a non-alcoholic lounge. I think now it's been vacant for quite some time. So there is sensitivity amongst surrounding neighbors to the location, and we did receive some concerns from a surrounding neighbor, actually across Blondo Street, who owns that property. So we wanted to make sure we looked into this substantially, and we did speak with Ms. Davis over the last week, a little more in-depth about our business plan, and I'm comfortable with it at this point. She does not intend to use the basement. She will not engage in outdoor music, no outdoor patios. She'll begin the business very cautiously with Thursday through Sunday hours in the evenings, and I think is now aware of the sensitivity, and we'll make sure that she does follow up with surrounding neighbors and the surrounding property owner if this is approved today, to make sure this does go well for everyone. So having said that, I would be supportive of this today moving forward. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. As somebody that fought against the last establishment quite hard, because I thought it was going to have a huge impact on the surrounding businesses, I don't believe that Ms. Davis's establishment is in any way anything like the previous one. So I wish, Ms. Davis, hopefully you can hear us. I know we can't hear you, but we wish you success. I think it's great what you're doing. I would encourage you to reach out to any neighbors that you haven't met with, and just so that they have your number in case they have any issues. It's always better to exchange phone numbers and have a good relationship with your neighbors moving forward.
Thank you.
So I would encourage you to do that, and I will, I will support your license for this establishment, because I think what you're doing is something that we can all, we can all live with here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I wanted to just say to the BOLD students here, when we talked this morning about civic engagement and outreach to the neighbors and the community and the neighbors, this is a textbook example of that. We delayed this so the council president could engage in neighborhood groups we talked about more, and get feedback and make sure the issue was resolved or questions were answered. So as we vote on this here today, it's a, it's a good exercise in what we talked about this morning. Thanks, Mr. President.
And Ms. Davis, I think you can hear us now, right?
I can hear, but I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. I think...
Okay.
Did you hear how I characterize your business plan? Is that an accurate assessment of what you intend to do?
Yes.
Good. And you are a current business owner right in the area, right? Just to the other side of the intersection?
Yes, I'm right in the corner. It's the African Beauty Breeding, the Cocoa Hair Breeding Salon.
Yeah, yeah, and you've been there for a long time, right?
Yes, I've been here since 2014.
Yeah. Maybe one more question I would ask, just, I know there's a motion in a second on the floor at the moment, but the, uh, the application is for a C license, which means on sale and off sale. Is that important to you, or would you consider doing on sale only?
I like to do both, because some people, they will come only just to listen to music. They don't wanna drink there, and it'll be even safe for them to buy the drink and go to the house and drink.
Okay.
You come sit down for a little bit, and they buy the drink to go. So I like to do both.
Okay. And you heard Ms. Melton discuss engaging your neighbors and having that conversation with them? Is that something you're committed to doing?
Yes, I've started relieving with my church. The church is just down the street, 10th St. I started from there, talking to a couple of the people that I know before, that I know the area very well, that live in the area. So they also give me the idea what I can do to help do, so I don't bring any crime or any violence into the area.
Yeah.
And talk to some other people, too.
Good. Yeah, I would just encourage you to talk to your surrounding business owners there, and definitely Philip Butner, who called and had some concerns about the location and its history. So please do that, and then we'll, of course, watch operations closely here. And I'll stick with the motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Items 13 and 14 can be considered together for Carson Acres, Lot 1, located southeast of 252nd Street and West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 13 and 14 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat.
Public hearing and vote on items 13 and 14 are today.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Carson, on behalf of Carson Acres, 4034 South 224th Circle, Omaha, 68022.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the Oaks Replat 3 located at 12656 Weir Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Mindy Crook with Arch Icon Development Construction at 509 Walker Street, Woodbine, Iowa, here to answer any questions about Millard Landing.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Joe Duttlove's, 10836 Old Mill Road, engineer for the project, and here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 16, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Westwood Heights 15th Edition Replant 5 located southwest of 129th Avenue and West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be's communication opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today.
Kyle Hawsey with ENA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. Here representing the applicant and make myself available for any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
President. I know there's, uh, there was a communication from a, either a budding or nearby property owner asking about a requirement for any waivers. I'll make the assumption that it's not on our agenda if those were required, but just because that came in, I want to make it clear that no waivers are required. So I could ask either Kyle or the Planning Department if you want to respond to that. Okay, Mr. Fenslow?
Yeah, Dave Fenslow, City Planning. All of the lots that are being created, they have existing buildings on them, and each one of those lots is code compliant to setbacks and everything that needs to meet.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for DMNR Investment Replant 3 located at 4848 South 66th Circle. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Connor Shields with RW Engineering, representing the owner of the property. Here, answer any questions.
Thank you. And your address, too?
7525 North 100 and 1st Street.
Thanks. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Avenue 1 Replant 5 with a waiver to Section 53 A4D Lot Frontage located in southwest of 192nd Street, West Dodge Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Bluestem Prairie 2nd Edition located at 4966 Newport Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Ed Teo with Habitat for Humanity, 1701 North 24th Street.
Hi, I'm Aaron Wheezy with Olson, 211 South 67th Street, Suite 200. Project Manager Engineer, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, hi. How are you today?
Good afternoon.
Just wanted to compliment you on all of the investment that you've brought into the area, also your engagement to the community and the opportunity for many residents to become homeowners. I motion to approve this.
Thank you.
There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero, Harding Epstein's. Item 20, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district located at 4076 Spencer Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
How you doing? Clemson Weah, owner of CNN Investments, property address 4076 Spencer. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Shout out to you for the investment, motion to approve.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 21, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2504 Bancroft Street, from GI District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 22, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district, to incorporate into that district the property located at 20309 Robert Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Joe Detlef's, 10836 Old Mill Road, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 23, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district, to incorporate into that district the property located at 2051 North 156th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 23 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 24, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district, to incorporate into that district the property located at 3131 South 156th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 24 is today. Proponents, please.
Jeremy Moore, 19506 Pearl Circle, Elkhorn, Nebraska, here representing Scott Catholic High School.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 25, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district, to incorporate into that district the property located at 2500 South 120th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 25 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 26, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district, to incorporate into that district the property located at 2011 North 156th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 26 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 27, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district, to incorporate into that district the property located at 4036 South 42nd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 27 is today. Proponents, please.
Stacey Potanski with Potanski Creative Building Design and Drafting, representing the owner, supports this change.
Thank you, and your address too?
My address is 1811 West 2nd Street, Suite 285 in Grand Island, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 28 and 29 can be considered together for property located at 2922 North 16th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 28, an ordinance to rezone this property from GC District to CC District. Item 29, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI overlay district, to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on items 28 and 29 are today. Proponents, please.
Lawrence Butler, LT Butler Engineers, 4809 Northwest Radio Highway. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Hi, how are you today?
I am blessed, how are you doing?
Great. Can you give me a bird's eye view of what your project is going to be here?
Oh yeah, absolutely. This is a, it's called the Grand Theater North Projects. We're taking a building that is currently locally landmarked and trying to preserve it the best way that we can, converting it into four affordable housing units, which will be good for that area. This is also part of a conditional use permit that was approved on June 9th to convert it to a multifamily. And then we also have parking waivers approved on June 13th, because there's no parking in that area. But I feel it's a great investment and also brings affordable housing to an area that needs it.
Thank you, and have you done much engagement to the community nearby?
Yes, so we know the pastor of Mount Vernon Baptist Church, Clarence Baskin. We worked with him on the previous project that we had right adjacent to it, called the Atlas Apartments, excuse me, Atlas Apartments. And we have some of the neighbors, Leo, who's located at 1614 Benny Street, who always gives us a call when there's some issues going on. So we do, we have engaged the neighbors and they are excited about the one project that we've completed, a historic renovation, and they're excited about this one, just so we can get rid of another vacant building in the area.
Great, and last but not least, is the, will it be affordable?
Yes, absolutely.
So can you kind of give me some narrative regarding affordability?
I think what we've decided on is going to be three three bedrooms and a two-bedroom apartment. They're going to be huge. I think the affordability, that I'm not in control of, property manager NP Dodges, but they will be affordable, per the city of Omaha guidelines.
And due to our new action plan, we talked a little bit about 30% medium, or 30% income, Dave. Mr. Fenslow, will this be one of those projects?
Dave Fenslow, City Planning. You know, the price point of these apartments would be up to the developer. We didn't put any stipulation that they needed to hit that 30%.
I believe we're at 40, between 40 and 60% on this one.
Thank you.
No problem.
Move to approve.
So motion to approve items number 28 and 29 in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items 30 through 35 were held on August 22nd. I don't see any further lights, is there a motion? Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
There's been a request to remove item number 50 from the consent agenda, so that is removed. And first, we'll take the public hearings on agenda items numbers 36 through 49 and 51 through 54. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by a name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. These are items 36 through 49 and 51 through 54. Seeing none?
49 is not included in that.
It is.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. Here against number 49. There's all kinds of national associations and leagues of Nebraska municipalities, things that are associations of government people rather than citizens, and they seem to have more voice at the microphones than we do. The municipal league of Nebraska municipalities is one of those, is one of those, who have in the past voiced their opinions against the TIF financing products, projects for a number of reasons. I won't go into that because that's another item. But I'm basically opposed to the amount of money going to an association of other government people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on these items? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Motion in a second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 50, a resolution to approve and accept a grant award from the EPA in the amount of $1 million for a climate action plan.
Public hearing and vote on number 50 is today. I think we'll first hear from the mayor's office, and then we'll go to proponents and opponents.
Good afternoon, council. Marco Floriani, mayor's office. I'm here to answer any questions about the mayor's recommendation to accept the $1 million EPA grant for the creation of the city of Omaha's Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. This is an important item to the mayor's office. We are frequently asked for updates regarding this item and the creation of a climate action plan from foundations in the Omaha community, local community nonprofits, profits, and businesses. I want to stress first and foremost, this is a risk and resiliency plan. And it's important to the Metro Smart Cities Advisory Group, which approved this initiative and made the recommendation to hire Pale Blue Dot and HDR. This award would pay for those contractual services with HDR and Pale Blue Dot. It would allow us to work with MAPPA on a sub grant to meet EPA regulations, to incorporate regional elements into this plan. And it would support city staff to be dedicated to this plan and ensure that we're meeting EPA compliance and reporting throughout this process. How does Omaha prepare and respond to natural disasters or man-made disasters in a changing landscape? This is just as much about reducing the cost in response to those disasters and being resilient. There are many local organizations and businesses I mentioned that have plans and support this. Look at the zoo, First National Bank, Creighton, UNMC, Methodist Health System, OPPD, MUD are some that come to mind. Here, and happy to answer any questions that you may have on the acceptance of these funds. This will not cost the city money. The city is not obligated to commit future encumbrances associated with this work. It is to pay for the creation of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today on number 50?
Rebecca Beriantos-Patlin, 3305 East Street. I'm hoping that this plan will go towards like a PM10 specification, where they look to see what these filters have in them, because South Omaha 68107 has the worst air quality. And we need these filters speciated. And if you're truly, who was that? If they're truly going to receive money here, I would really ask that they look at the PM10s that I've been fighting for, for over 10 years, to be speciated, to see what's in our air that's causing asthma, lung problems, sinus problems. That's a biggie in South Omaha, so I'm for this, thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Michaela Valentine, Government and Community Relations Manager, Omaha Public Power District. OPPD supports this resolution and urges the Omaha City Council to approve the acceptance of the grant award of $1 million. You may have noted that recently the OPPD Board of Directors passed a $2 billion near-term generation energy package. This has a lot to do with resilience, that's a word you're going to hear a lot today. And like the city of Omaha, OPPD is also working to reduce greenhouse gases. And we are interested in the synergistic effects between the city of Omaha and OPPD, as well as other stakeholders who would be involved with the passage of this resolution. So please vote yes on Resolution 2023-0871. Thank you.
Other proponents?
Hello, Mike Helgerson, Executive Director of the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency here in Omaha, 2222 Cumming Street. I'm here to speak on behalf and in support of this resolution as well. MAPPA agreed at the time that the funds were applied for to help support this initiative and provide some of the regional engagement with other community stakeholders to help facilitate the requirements of the funding. And this really builds on a lot of the coordination that MAPPA's been doing around air quality with the city of Omaha and Douglas County over the last 10 years through our Little Steps Cleaner Air Program, an initiative focused on ground level ozone across the metro area. Increasingly, as we look at federal grant opportunities, climate is a very significant aspect of the eligibility and the priority given to those funding decisions. And so we encourage the city to support the acceptance of these funds, continue to engage in the planning process and engaging in the regional planning process to help tell that story for future funding opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
I'm Abram Luters, I'm representing Omaha By Design at 618 South 11th Street. Omaha By Design is a nonprofit that has a vision for a livable city for everyone that calls the Omaha region home. And as a community, I think Omaha really values stewardship. We like to make decisions not just for ourselves, but for our children and our grandchildren. And really, that's what this planning work is all about. This is about making smart choices now, to look ahead to the future, to mitigate risks, you know, for everyone, both now and in the future, and to also be able to prioritize decisions. We know that when we talk about reducing emissions, you know, reducing future risks for climate events, there are a million different pieces of work that we could be doing, but we don't have unlimited resources. So planning is about setting priorities, finding things that can have the biggest impact for the smallest amount of money. And on that related note, I know one thing we also like in Omaha is good value, a good deal, and this money does not require a match from the EPA. And so getting a million dollars in planning money, not even provide a match, it's a pretty good deal, and we think it's going to have a big impact on the livability for Omaha, you know, now and in the future. So for these reasons, Omaha By Design strongly supports the approval of this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Mr. Mello, your first visit as president of the Chamber of Commerce, welcome.
Well, good afternoon, President Festerson, members of the council. Heath Mello with the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce, 808 Conagra Drive, Suite 400, 68102. First, let me say how honored I am to be able to be with you today, and my first time in this role as the new president/CEO of the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce. I look forward to working with all of you in our continued work to share and enhance and grow this great city. I'm here today to express the Greater Omaha Chamber's support for agenda item number 50, which would accept $1 million from the EPA federal grant in furtherance of developing the city's first climate action plan. We want to thank Mayor Stothart for her leadership in both pursuing this crucial federal funding and supporting long-term planning to address climate resiliency, as well as other council members, particularly President Festerson, who's been advocating for this action for a number of years. We also want to recognize our partners, MAPPA, who will assist the city throughout the planning and public engagement process. As you may know, the state of Nebraska under Governor Jim Pillen is accepting federal funds to work on the state's first climate action plan. We believe it makes fiscal sense to the city of Omaha to leverage similar federal funding to develop a regional climate action plan. Utilizing these federal funds reduces the reliance on local funding sources to do this work and opens access to future federal funding to implement local projects. Businesses selecting sites for development and relocation to Omaha and relocation to Omaha are increasingly including requirements for sustainability and climate resiliency. We also see the issue of sustainability and climate resiliency in our work to recruit and retain talent in this city, especially with young professionals. The Greater Omaha Chamber believes a broad, cross-sector collaborative approach to climate resiliency will best position our city to compete both for new investment and the jobs of the future. We ask for a favorable vote on this item and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi, my name is Alex O'Handlin. I'm at thirty-nine oh two Davenport Street. I'm here today on behalf of One Omaha and in acceptance and in favor of accepting the EPA funds for the upcoming climate action plan. One Omaha empowers people where they live through education, training, and engagement to develop thriving neighborhoods. The most important tenet of a thriving neighborhood is that it's a healthy neighborhood. The upcoming climate action plan is an opportunity to learn from residents about their experiences living in neighborhoods that are affected by environmental injustices amid a worsening climate crisis. This information should inform a plan that addresses and remediates those injustices while at the same time creating a blueprint for moving forward with the development of our city in a way that supports residents and the ecosystems that we live in. It's imperative that we create a comprehensive climate action plan to improve the quality of life in our community, address decades of environmental racism, and determine how to best foster a sustainable future that includes clean air, clean water, and a healthful environment for all. This plan must be founded on the feedback of the residents most impacted by climate change and be ready for expeditious implementation. Accepting these funds is the first step in a long and overdue process. I urge you all to vote to accept these funds so that we can move forward with this important plan in the most fiscally responsible manner possible.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works Department. I was asked to make a brief statement on behalf of Public Works. We rely heavily on federal loans and grants throughout the different programs we manage in Public Works, whether those be transportation, roads, bridges, flood control, and wastewater treatment. Weather impacts are changing, weather patterns are changing. An example, the Corps of Engineers is right now, they're releasing new and updated information on the magnitude and frequency of the flooding on the Missouri River. And that's going up, it's not going down. A good example of something we're doing right now at our wastewater treatment plants, they're called our flood hardening projects. And that's something we're working with the federal government, FEMA, their Hazard Mitigation Plan, to spend funds in advance. So when that next disaster comes along, we're gonna be more prepared, we're gonna be more resilient, we're not gonna have as much problems getting our wastewater treatment plant back up started when that next hazard comes along. So that's a program we're working on right now to harden, to make our wastewater treatment plants more resilient. The work is being funded primarily by federal funds from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Program. We need to continue to be able to secure these federal funds. They're out there, they're gonna help us become more resilient. They're gonna help us if we spend these funds right. They're gonna help us face these disasters and spend less money in the future. So I guess I'll just kind of wrap up there. I appreciate your time and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Luis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I just want to back what the proponents have been saying about the financial aspect of this development. This council and the mayor are dedicating fund, city funds, to the development of the climate action plan. And so you have a fund there, and then now we have government funds coming in, and it's growing. I've been skeptical of the particulars on the climate action plan, but financially, this is a great development. So I'm supporting that point. And then also whoever's doing environmental control, I want to thank them for not cranking up the air conditioning because it's stressful to be in a cold environment and then go out into a hot environment and vice versa. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank everyone that came up in support of this action plan. And I would also like to share my same sentiments regarding all of the wonderful remarks that were made in support of this. I'll go ahead and move to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll second. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Marco, couple of questions, please.
Marco Floriani, mayor's office.
Good afternoon, Marco. So in the EPA grant agreement, it says it's from six one to twenty-three to September thirty of twenty-seven, correct?
Correct.
So to spend that million dollars, you have a budget? Are you gonna spend so much a year? Are you gonna spend it all at the beginning? Or how will you spend that?
It'll be spent throughout the grant budget period of four years, but primarily the funds are paying for the pale blue, the work Pale Blue Dot and HDR will be doing. And that price is the same as it was when it went to council in March and was approved to subaward two hundred and fifty thousand to MAPPA on the regional component and to support, for the support of city staff in this initiative.
And it was mentioned, how long did it take for the city to secure that grant? I know it's been worked on for quite a while. How long did it take to get this to this point today?
We applied, or we sent in our application June first. The funds were, or the letter of notice or award for these funds was sent to us August seventeenth. I have liaised with council staff and council members going back to March on this grant opportunity in our anticipation to utilize these funding, these funds to pay for this grant, or to pay for the climate action plan.
Okay, thank you for that. And as was mentioned earlier, so you mentioned a bunch of local businesses that are supporting this besides, the mayor is in support of it, and I believe Mr., my friend Senator Mello mentioned that the governor and the state also has a similar program as the city's doing here, correct?
Correct. The state of Nebraska accepted the EPA grant funds as well. There is hard to cover the scope of the state of Nebraska. It does not, it carves out the Greater Omaha MSA. Our funds are for the Greater Omaha Metropolitan Statistical Area. That is one of the reasons MAPPA is on board to help with data collection and community outreach outside of Omaha Douglas County.
Okay, and this is to pay for the creation of the plan, I believe you said, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and again, this is not city tax dollars, but it's a federal grant from the EPA, correct?
Correct. Federal dollars from the EPA, zero match. This is a low-risk, high-impact opportunity.
And that was based on the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I know I had heard from a lot of constituents on that. And I want to commend the mayor and also his, Senator Mello, glad that you're at the Chamber of Commerce now because I know working with you in the legislature, you're very effective at communicating, and I look forward to working you on this as well as the mayor. And I want to commend, it was mentioned, Council President Festerson has spent a lot of time working on this prior to me being on the council, but also educating me on a lot of the questions that I had. So I'll look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Mr. President, I guess Marco, if you wouldn't mind, I think I'll start there. So I think it was stated that, well, first of all, as we discussed at pre-council, so the award of this, or notification of the award from the EPA came to the city of Omaha on August seventeenth of this year, correct?
Correct.
And we, the city, have twenty-one days to respond. Actually, from the award, it says the recipient demonstrates its commitment to carry out this award either by, one, drawing down funds within twenty-one days after EPA award or amendment mailing date, again, being August seventeenth of this year, or, two, not filing a notice of disagreement with specified, specified in this award. The authorized representative of the recipient must furnish notice of the disagreement to the EPA award official within twenty-one days, and on and on. So the twenty-one days would expire on September seventh of twenty twenty-three, which is next Thursday, I believe. When I first saw this, I mean, the announcement or the press release on this came out late last week, and it was placed on our agenda. I was hoping to have some more discussion because I do have some issues about it and was going to lay it over. But obviously, we don't meet next week, and then that's when I discovered the twenty-one day approval period, or period to respond to the EPA. So we don't have the opportunity to lay this over if we have any questions, unless maybe there is also provision that if there, it has some language in here about if there's a disagreement of the award, and I suppose if we could make the argument that there is a disagreement, that maybe we could make that request. But I don't know that you're in a position to say whether or not that that would be a good idea at this point. Is that right?
That's right. I would request legal staff weigh in on that.
Okay. The legal staff just left. All right. And Ryan, while you're walking up, I'll just throw the bait out to, not bait, but if you wouldn't mind covering also the reason why, because there's language in there, that second part of what I just read, that the city could, or a recipient of the award could receive that. And please explain why it requires city council approval then.
Ryan Wiesen, Deputy City Attorney. I guess I'll start with what I think the second part of your question is, is why it would require city council approval. There's a provision of the Omaha Municipal Code which requires the governing body, the city council, to approve of any contract that either expends city dollars in excess of twenty thousand dollars or that we receive city dollars in excess of twenty thousand dollars. A grant agreement is the type of contract, this is, or would be the receipt by the city of Omaha of a million dollars, so that would require council approval.
Okay.
I think what your initial question was with the ability to file a notice of disagreement with the award terms and conditions within twenty-one days of the notice of award. If the council were to reject the acceptance of this, we would have to notify the city, or the EPA that the city, we would file a notice of disagreement being that the city council didn't accept it. Whether or not that would be acceptable to the EPA to then open up negotiations, I'm not prepared to answer that question. I can't respond for the EPA. I don't know that this EPA would view the rejection of this award by the city council as a notice of disagreement. They may just review it as an outright rejection of funds.
And I, but I did not say, or I did not say not agree to, or not accept it. It was just, if, if, if an argument was made, if we were to lay it over with the argument that was made, that more questions needed to be answered, is that, do you think that that would satisfy number two in the acceptance award, the award of the acceptance?
I don't know that I can speak on behalf of the EPA. And my thought would be that a notice of disagreement would have to identify to the EPA what terms the receiving entity disagrees with.
Okay.
And I don't know what those would be at this point, other than you're feeling that twenty-one days isn't enough to evaluate whether or not we should accept it or not.
All right.
And I don't know how the EPA would respond to that.
Fair enough. If you wouldn't mind sticking by, I might have more. But Marco, if you wouldn't mind, please. The, so the total award is for a million dollars. And I do know that in the budget summary page, I'll start with, it looks like there's a identifier number eight says other for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm to assume that that's the MAPPA portion of that?
Correct.
How come we don't have a MAPPA award or a MAPPA agreement alongside with this?
That is on the agenda as first reading.
And why is, why is it on as an ordinance?
Defer to legal.
Why wouldn't it be a resolution, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Ryan Wiesen, Deputy City Attorney, because I believe it would be an expenditure over multiple fiscal years, and the charter requires that to be approved by ordinance as opposed to resolution.
All right. Okay, so Marco, sorry, I got you. Sitting down. So the remainder of the budget, you've got identified about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of personnel costs. Is that, is that a one-time, is that one year, or is that to cover the four years?
That is for two years at this time.
For two years. What happens after the second year when this is a four-year agreement?
We have staff for the creation of the plan, and the plan is due back to the EPA in two years. So in two years from award date is when our deliverables are due back to the EPA. We wanted to ensure we had staff costs associated with the creation of those deliverables the EPA is requiring. The four-year budget term includes opportunities to utilize funds past that. Part of this plan will be understanding some of those additional funding, how they're put to use or utilized in association with this plan. We have two years of staff.
What additional funding?
The, the budget.
The, so you're talking about the remaining, I'll go past the fringe benefits and travel. So the remaining, basically five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, that five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, the Pale Blue Dot HDR contract is included in that. We do have some funding remaining because the contract was three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Those funds have not been programmed. But if we were to anticipate needing to contract out any other services for this grant, we wanted to have a remainder available to do so.
I'm glad you brought up the Pale Blue Dot and HDR agreement because I do have some questions on that as well, too. When, and this council passed that, that agreement back in March of this year, correct?
Correct.
And I'm reading from the cover letter of the resolution that it was to cover the period of March first, twenty twenty-three through June thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Is that correct?
June twenty twenty-four, correct.
Mm-hmm. When, so when was, when did that contract start then, if that's what we approved?
Was executed in, I think, July thirty-first was when it was executed.
Didn't we, wasn't the agreement that it was supposed to be March first?
We approved selecting Pale Blue Dot and HDR to lead the work.
And then, and then you have the period of time to make the agreement.
We had the period of time to make the agreement and to ensure that we could pay for the contractual services and utilize these grant funds.
So that was gonna be my next question because part of the EPA's approval is that, or for the costs it could be covered, I kind of lost it where it is here, but I think it was, I just find it interesting that the, it had to be, it could be retroactive, cover retroactive expenses associated with it to June first of this year. But we, we passed the, the blue dot, which was actually kind of interesting because remember, that was the one that was kind of cut and pasted. Their response was cut and pasted to us and had incomplete sentences. And remember that one?
I remember that council reading.
Anyway, so that was one of my questions is how, how we can be paying for that since it was, I understand it was approved, but maybe the agreement wasn't finalized until after that point in time. So, but I don't think we were told at that time that the funding was going to be through an EPA grant. We were told it was another source of funding. So what, when, when did the source of funding change?
We identified or included that this would be, the work of Pale Blue Dot and HDR, we anticipated would be funded by a grant. We had not specifically identified which grant. There are, there was a Department of Energy grant that we had discussed.
Yes. That's what, that's what was told to us that it would be.
This EPA opportunity became available the week of March seventh, the week that we went to council with the recommendation to hire Pale Blue Dot and HDR. What we learned was this EPA opportunity was tailor-made for our work with HDR and Pale Blue Dot and the creation of this climate action.
That was back in March?
Resiliency plan. That's when the notice of opportunity was made available for us to review from the EPA.
In March?
Correct.
And we, this council first found out about it last week.
The EPA?
Yeah.
Opportunity. We have communicated with council members and staff going back to March. I
I'm not gonna take a poll here, but I would disagree with that.
I'm not familiar with the inner workings or communication of council, but we have communicated regarding the anticipation that we would apply for this EPA grant going back to the spring.
And I probably should have prefaced all this by saying, look, I obviously am very sensitive to our environment. I want to be a good steward of our environment. I was one of the, I led the charge on making sure that we increased our recycling pickup capabilities with FCC. capabilities with FCC. I'm asking these questions because we're also stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and I want to make sure that the contract, it just feels like that we're kind of, there's a little bit of bait and switch here, maybe not intentional, but I don't think we've been kind of kept abreast of the, you know, what's been happening kind of behind the curtain as we go through this process. And, you know, just, interesting side note, if you'll, if you'll go with me here a second. I'm reading in the project description, it says, "The agreement provides funding under the Inflation Reduction Act", which again, I think is interesting, "to the city of Omaha to develop regional climate mitigation plans to address greenhouse gas emissions reduction measures throughout the entire metropolitan area, and to conduct meaningful engagement with low-income and disadvantaged communities." I'm not sure I know what that means.
We wanted to clarify with the EPA staff what that meant as well, and we spoke to them and walked through our community engagement process with the EPA, articulating that this would be a citywide climate action resiliency plan, and that we would be going into communities across the city of Omaha, and they approved that approach to community engagement.
So, and then, I'm also confused, you just said the words there too, but I also, you know, when Michaela was up and she told us that, you know, we'd hear a lot of this about risk assessment, and I'm, so now I'm, you know, a bit confused as to whether or not this is a risk assessment slash hazard mitigation plan, or is it a climate change plan? Because that's, that's exactly what this says. It's a climate mitigation plan.
This EPA program has certain requirements that we address greenhouse gas emissions and measures for reduction. Those were included in our scope of work with Pale Blue Dot and HDR, and in the RFP, the city issued for the design and technical guidance of the Climate Action Resiliency Plan. The EPA is making sure that that's included, and it was part of their program description. It also includes the resiliency efforts the city of Omaha included in our RFP for the Climate Action Resiliency Plan, and in the response received by the consultants.
Okay. As long as we're going down that route then, because if you had questions about it, that's great, and you clarified that with the EPA, I guess on that same page, there are a couple others, hopefully, maybe this was also discussed, but it says something about, you know, reduce, reduce over the lifetime measures, tons of pollution, GHCs and co-pollutants, reduce annually and tons of pollution, reduce with respect to low-income and disadvantaged communities. And I don't mean to be flippant or glib, but, you know, are there micro, are there microclimates above certain areas of town and not others? Why is it worded that way?
The EPA wants to ensure that historically disadvantaged communities, communities that maybe have not been part of plans the EPA has released in the past, wanted to ensure that we included them in our plan. Again, reinforced with the EPA, our strategy to make this a citywide, it's inclusive across the city, and that we'll be going into council districts in the city for the community engagement, and that was acceptable to them, and that's what we sought, was to make sure that our approach was approved and acceptable as an eligible activity and funded through this grant, and they approved that. I cannot speak for the EPA specifically.
Okay. And I'm sorry, that's not fair to ask that of you, but I will say in the very next paragraph, it says, "All citizens throughout the greater Omaha area, as well as citizens at large, will be benefited." So it just seems, I just wondered if that was a question that the city brought up as well. Someone mentioned, I can't remember who at this point, but that there was no cost to the city. The personnel, you've covered for the first two years, and then what happens after that? There's, obviously, we're basically being asked to, that we will implement a plan and take on the expense, both personnel and materials and whatever actions need to be taken, without knowing what that plan is. Wouldn't a better time to actually maybe apply for this or receive this would be after the work of HDR and blue pale dots done?
These are not implementation dollars. These are dollars to develop.
That's my concern, too, is that we're being asked to, to commit to, because it says, "We have to commit to implementation of the plan once it's approved."
I would have to clarify with the EPA what that means. These funds are to be utilized for the creation of the plan, not implementation.
And this is part of my point about why I would have liked to have had some more time to, I feel, I feel uncomfortable approving this with the taxpayers' dollars, not only, you know, maybe not so much for the grant itself, but the questions I have about it, the implementation, and the future costs associated with it as well, too. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your patience and responses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milton.
Thank you. And I don't need to go back through. I was, I was a little bit confused by the budget summary page, because it had, it has contractual at $523,743, but Pale Blue Dot is only $377. Marco, do you want to come back up? Sorry, I didn't know you'd sat down.
Marco Floriani, Mayor's Office.
Thank you.
Our...
So what's the other contractual? Is that for HDR?
We are only committed to the $377,000 for Pale Blue Dot and HDR. That number from the contract that was approved in March remains the same. It was a million-dollar opportunity. It was formula-driven. We did not specifically request a million dollars. That's what the EPA federal formula made available for the city of Omaha. When we looked at the cost of the contract, it was less than, yes, this $523,000. Those funds may be utilized in the future for contractual services that we would bring to council for approval. The EPA put that remainder in, under contractual services as a place to sit, but we are not obligated to utilize the remainder of those funds.
So, because this also calls for personnel, you said two years, and it's personnel plus benefits, obviously.
Correct.
Which is 50% of the annual salary. So would those funds be able to be used to continue that? Because I'm assuming we're not going to hire somebody and then fire them two years later.
They may be utilized for personnel, staff. Should we go that direction?
So that could maybe fund this, and what is that person's job actually going to be? This new full-time position that this EPA grant funds?
That was an internal position in the planning, it'll be housed, they'll be housed in the planning department. Dave Fansel, our planning directors, here to answer any questions, specifically regarding that personnel. They'll be working on behalf of this mayor's office initiative.
But I just wondered what the grant required the person to do. I wouldn't have any problems adding somebody to planning. I think we need more code inspectors, but I'm guessing that the EPA is going to, is going to dictate what that job entails.
They will be leading, yes, they will be leading that position, that will be leading this work alongside the Metro Smart Cities Advisory Group with the mayor and the mayor's office, leading that work, making sure we're reporting to the EPA, and working with MAPPA and interfacing with the consultants and other city staff to ensure that we are responsibly delivering on what we're requesting a million dollars from the EPA for, which is the creation of this plan. So quality assurance is a big piece of that staff responsibility.
Right. I just want to be sure that it makes sense, because we're, we're literally going to pay somebody a full-time salary to make sure that the consultants that we're paying, you know, $377,000, are doing what they're supposed to do, and then the examples of the plans that the consultants already gave us were cut and pasted and look like plans that they provided for every other city. So I guess, I mean, this million dollars is still our taxpayer money. It just, you know, on our W2s, it comes out of the federal part instead of, out of the city taxes that we pay on our property taxes, our sales taxes. So this is still our money. I just want to understand what it's being used for. And so then, when the city council approves a contract for $377,000, for a consultant to write a contract, and then we're going, we need to pay somebody else a full-time salary to make sure that the contractor is doing what they need to do?
A plan of this nature that involves, just from a city perspective alone, Parks Department, Legal Department, Planning Department, Public Works Department, Mayor's Office, requires much coordination. It's a full-time responsibility. I had been assisting in that process in order to make sure we're utilizing funds efficiently and we're making the most of this opportunity. It was decided that we should look to hire a full-time staff person, and found somebody currently with the city of Omaha Planning Department to take on that role and transition with this award.
Okay. So that leads me to my next question. And so we're not adding a full-time position in planning, you're transitioning somebody from planning over, but will that person then need to be replaced? Maybe Mr. Fansel, you can ask that, if you could answer that.
I can. Dave Fansel, City Planning. Excuse me, yes, we, the opportunity came up through working with the mayor's office to add a position into the planning department, and typically what we do is we ask existing staff if anybody's interested in an opportunity. We had a current employee who was very interested in moving from one position into this position, and so, yes, we will be backfilling that position. We're not going to lose a position in our department. This one will be funded through this grant, and we will replace that person as a general fund person.
Okay. So we are adding, we literally are, I mean, we are adding a full-time position.
Not to the general fund.
For the first two years.
Correct.
So, but in the third year, you'll anticipate having that third, you'll have to, I mean, you don't want to, you're not going to eliminate the position.
That is not our intent, no.
Right, hopefully with a long-term employee who's just taking...
Absolutely, correct.
I wouldn't want to see that happen to that employee.
Neither would I.
So I guess what I'm saying is, we're committing after two years to continue to fund.
That would be my intention, yes, but that's two, three years down the road.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. And so that, then I come back to, the $250,000 is going to MAPPA. Is that correct?
Marco Floriani, Mayor's Office. That is correct. The $250,000 would go towards MAPPA for those regional components of this plan. We didn't think that the city of Omaha and city of Omaha staff should be working outside of the city of Omaha on this plan. So wanted to ensure we had a partner that had trust regionally and experience with federal funds, and that's MAPPA.
But it, but it just doesn't say what MAPPA is doing with the funds.
Yes, they'll be working on the same work, the city of Omaha, so the city of Omaha's comprehensive, or excuse me, Climate Action Resiliency Plan, those, that description of the preliminary climate action plan and the deliverables the EPA is requiring that are in this grant description, MAPPA will be ensuring that we are able to deliver those from a regional perspective, working with the counties in the greater Omaha, Council Bluffs, MSA. So they'll be focused on that work. Within the MSA, we'll be focused on city of Omaha.
Okay. And so what, I guess what I'm, what I'm just not clear upon is, there are a whole lot of people who are supporting this, who stood up and spoke, and they spoke about, you know, this million dollars is going to do all these different things. I mean, it's going to clean the air, it's going to clean all the water, it's going to stop flooding, it's going, I mean, this is just a million dollars that essentially is paying for consultants and another full-time employee in our planning department.
It would be premature to describe exactly what will be in this plan.
Right.
We need to engage with the public.
But I want to be, I want to be clear about what this million is doing. And by the way, we've already committed taxpayer dollars to this plan. That was already voted on by this council, so we have to pay that $377,000. We passed it. You were here. It was back in March, right?
That we approved selecting Pale Blue Dot and HDR.
Correct. So we're going to have to pay them.
A funding source, which is identified as a grant, not the general fund.
How could we have identified a grant that we hadn't known that we received yet? I don't think that that would be legal. So...
The source of those funds was not identified. It was in March. That was just the recommendation to hire Pale Blue Dot.
Correct. So what we passed in March was we hired Pale Blue Dot. This council voted yes. They've already started their work, and we approved paying them $377,000. We applied for this grant to hopefully get it so that the taxpayers wouldn't have to pay, so that our city tax dollars wouldn't have to pay the $377. If we don't accept this grant, we still have to pay the $377 out of our general fund, which are the hard-earned city of Omaha residents, property taxes, and sales taxes that they pay. Correct?
I believe that is correct. I would also ask legal department to weigh in on that contractual obligations associated with this work, but...
You know what? I don't need to ask the council as a lawyer myself, because we voted on it, and we signed the contract, and entered the contract, we're going to have to pay the contract. So I guess that's where I am, I struggle, although I don't like to vote for what sounds like a plan, that we have no idea what's in the plan, and I believe taking this money, it sounds like we're committing to whatever the recommendations are from the plan that we may or may not disagree with, because I don't want to rehash the disagreements I had, that I think we have to be very careful with using our language of climate resiliency, and it all sounds good, and it makes us all feel better, because we all want clean air and we all want clean water, but we also want everybody to be able to own a house, or at least have a roof over their head, and a lot of what the potential things that I've seen in other plans are, we're going to increase the cost to build affordable housing, we're going to increase the number of codes that have nothing to do with safety, and we are going to hinder, hinder our ability to add the over 40,000 units of affordable housing that we need here in the city of Omaha. So what I'm hoping is that we can work with the consultants on that, and I hope that, you know, in getting the opinion of, of course, they said they want the opinion of low-income and disadvantaged. That's great. I think we should have the income of everybody, though, because I'm fairly certain that the low-income and disadvantaged communities are going to want to make sure they have a place to live as well. And so sometimes it's all about how you present it, and I think we need to present everything to the community so that we can actually have a balance. We need clean air. We don't want pollutants. We want to find ways that we can have our air clean. Heck, farmers in the state of Nebraska are the best conservationists. I mean, they're the ones that have loved the land and tried to preserve the land going generations back. So I think we just need to make sure what we're doing and approving isn't committing ourselves to something that will hurt our citizens, especially the low-income and disadvantaged that you're claiming to help, because sometimes that's what people do. You know, it's kind of like, if you just say it's going to help the children, then everyone will vote yes, because who can vote no for that? But really, what you're doing is not helping the children necessarily. There's different intentions. So I struggle with this, but here's the one thing I don't want to do, and this is what I've had a problem with before. If somebody doesn't agree with some of the federal money, I don't necessarily want to give this back, because it's just going to go to some other city, and our tax dollars, our hard-earned property taxes are going to have to pay this consultant. By the way, I voted no, Dyer. And so, as much as I, as much as I would like to vote no on this, on accepting these funds, I'm not going to throw my own federal taxpayer dollars back at the federal government to go to another city and make our citizens pay for something that I don't want to pay for anyway. But that's the struggle and the dilemma I'm put in, but I can tell you, I'm going to be watching, and I'm going to be watching what Pale Blue Dot does, and I would like to have monthly updates on where we're at, what they've done, who they've contacted, and how they're presenting this information to the public.
Understood.
So with this, I think there's going to come a responsibility from this new full-time planning person that I may or may not know, since they currently are here, that I would like to have those updates monthly on what this is about, so that we can ensure... like to have those updates monthly on what this is about, so that we can ensure that what we're actually doing is making sure that we have clean air, by the way, for the whole city. I think everybody deserves clean air, no matter where you live, clean water, and that we're actually making the environment a better place, and that we're not spending money and we're going to mandate that everyone own an electric car when OPPD says they have to invest $2 billion. But by the way, if everyone owned an electric car, we don't have a grid to support it. So I want to make sure that we're not doing things that, in all honesty, are stupid. I want to make sure that what we're doing is going to benefit everybody in that community and that doesn't have the unintended consequences that I think other cities' climate action plans that this consultant has done, that their recommendations have resulted in. So I guess the long story short, if I can get that, I guess, I'll say from the Mayor's Office, but also from planning, if we could have that monthly, doesn't have to be with the whole council. I'm the only one asking for it. Anyone that wants to join me is more than welcome, as long as we don't have more than three council people in the room. No Breaking Open Meetings Act. But if you can commit to that, I would appreciate it.
Fanslove, City Planning. Absolutely. We'll work with Marco and provide you updates whenever you want them. Monthly, sure. We can talk with Marco.
Right.
This person in the Planning Department is going to assist in the plan, right? Marco was the lead. He obviously doesn't have the time to coordinate with all of his other duties, coordinate with all the other partners with this plan. So when we were, when I was approached, I agreed to hire a position to help with this plan, and absolutely, we will update you as you need to be updated.
Well, and I'll be honest, I think if you have too much underplayed, I appreciate that. I would actually rather see somebody from our City Planning Department, working with them and paying attention, paying attention to those details, and paying attention to the recommendations, and paying attention to who's being told what, and how they're being told, and how they're being asked, and who's being brought into it.
And Councilwoman, it's kind of in our wheelhouse to manage plans, so we were willing to take those duties on.
No, I appreciate that. And I, your planning department isn't, your department isn't who I'm questioning here.
I didn't think you were.
I'm looking for your department to be a partner with me to make sure what we're doing, because your department also is in charge of the affordable housing plan.
Correct.
And that means a lot to me. And sometimes I think you can have plans that are going to contradict each other. And it may be your department that can help in pointing that out.
Sure.
And so that's why, I guess, I feel more comfortable working with somebody in your department to make sure that doesn't happen. And if we don't have these funds, I might not be able to have that person that can be that check and balance that I feel that we need, because I'm very concerned about what may be in this climate action plan and what those recommendations are.
Thank you, Councilwoman Melton. And I did want to clarify, this is not the approval of an existing plan. It's the approval of the creation of a plan.
Right.
Recommended by the Stauthard administration and Mayor Stauthard.
Thank you. And I think this will help the rest of us, because it's a plan recommended by Mayor Stauthard, but then has to be voted on by the City Council, and it's a plan that will affect every citizen in the city. So I think that that's very important to note. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a few comments. I didn't come into this meeting expecting that I'd be in alignment with Mrs. Melton today. But I do, I appreciate all your words and exactly what you said, because I feel the same way. I have a, I have a couple of things. I kind of wish that we could rename this plan the Risk and Redundancy Plan, and not even talk about it as being the Climate Action Plan. I think there's a lot of misinformation in the world about that. And I think people, when they, when they read about a climate action plan, they believe that we're trying to say that we can change the climate. Trust me, I believe that God created the universe, and it's been in change since he created it, and there's nothing that really we can do to affect that change. But I do think that we can mitigate, and we can manage risk, and we can understand what changes are coming. And I think that's what this plan is really designed to do. It's not to change the climate, it's to allow us to react to the changes in the climate. And I think there's just a messaging, I think there's a messaging disconnect with a lot of our constituents. I got, you know, we had a dozen or better proponents today, and I probably had more than a dozen opponents today. But I think it's because of the, exactly that, it's that disconnect in how this plan is going to work. Truly, it's not much different than the Housing Affordability Action Plan. We're committing to the plan. And honestly, I think we already committed to the plan back in March. I think we already said we're going to do the plan. Now I'm finding out that there's a funding source discrepancy, which I'm kind of, that kind of takes me back a little bit. I thought it was the Department of Energy that was committing to us at that time to pay the funding. And now I'm finding out that that's not the case, that it's an EPA grant. And maybe Marco can explain, did the Department of Energy say, no, we're not going to fund this? And then we had to pivot?
Marco Floriani, Mayor's Office. No, the Department of Energy did not decline to fund this program. However, we had more information about this EPA program and felt it'd be a more secure opportunity in addition to additional funding.
Okay. So on this plan, what we're approving today, what we're talking about today, has zero implementation in it, right?
Zero. Just the creation of the plan.
Just the creation of the plan. So any implementation that's going to be affecting our city is going to need to be voted on us as a city council going forward, right?
We will take the plan to City Council.
Okay. There's also this fear that I've read in the emails this week about a 15-minute cities requirement of this plan. And there's this fear out there that this is like a conspiracy, that the climate action plan is nothing more than a disguise for us to implement a 15-minute cities rule that's been going on in Europe. And I'm not that familiar with it, but I'm familiar enough that, that I understand the fear, but I'm not sure that it's really real. I don't know if the climate action plan or this risk plan is really moving to that direction. Can you say yes or no? Is it a part of that strategy?
Councilman Rowe, I'm not familiar with what you're describing, but we are not approving a plan that is written today. We're accepting funds to create and pay for the creation of that plan. So, no, we are, I guess, I do not know more information, I do need more information about what I'm saying no to. But what you're describing does not sound like it was part of our RFP for the Climate Action Plan or our application materials from the EPA to fund this work.
Okay. I appreciate that. I mean, that's something that's, that there's a real fear, and I believe it's unfounded, but I understand that people have the fear. And I just want to make sure that we're on record in saying, hey, this is not our intent. And when it comes to implementation, if somebody says, hey, we want to create this 15-minute city, where we're going to restrict travel out of your neighborhood, from neighborhood to neighborhood, via technology and cameras and that kind of thing, I'll be voting no. I don't think we, I don't think any of us are intending to do that. And I think there's other things that, that could be coming up of the plan that we're going to vote no on. And hopefully, there's some that we can vote yes to, and that makes sense. I guess I don't have anything else to say. I just, I feel like, bottom line is, we committed to this. If we can get the federal funding to help pay for it, I'm all for that, rather than, you know, I mean, it is our taxpayer money. It's, like Mrs. Melton said, it's, it's just coming out of a different fund, out of my paycheck. But I don't think I'm going to get a tax rebate if we, you know, vote no. I don't think I'm going to get a property tax relief if I vote no. So I appreciate that, and I think we take advantage of it. And I do know, it's, in speaking to some of the people at MAPPA and some of the business leaders, it is an economic development question. People talk about it when it comes to economic development. And I don't want us to lose any business because we didn't have some sort of a plan in place. But I want it to be reasonable. I want it to be something that's workable and something that makes sense, not something that's crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I was very glad that Councilmember Melton was asking the questions about the, about the funding. Because it was, you know, quite frankly, quite frankly, I had a different thought during this discussion. And you know what? That's kind of what I was asking for at the outset, is that I would have liked to have all these discussions. I mean, now knowing that, you know, finding out today that we knew that the funding source would change back in March, I mean, we had, you know, we had four months to have this discussion. But here we are, having it with our, kind of the proverbial gun held to your head, because we don't meet next week, and we have to respond to the EPA by next Thursday. And that's not how we should be doing business. We had three, four months to discuss this. But these conversations are, it's been very eye-opening and helpful, because quite frankly, my thought of, I guess I didn't, what I didn't consider, is if this wasn't accepted, is that how do we pay for it? Because what you've said is, and what was told to us back in March when we originally committed to it, as Councilmember Rowe said, I mean, this is, in many respects, this is no different than kind of what we did in March. But you changed the funding source. But tell us that. Now, hold on, I'm not done on that. But because if we were told that there was going to be one funding mechanism, and then as soon as we passed that, there was a whole nother discussion going on, and it was likely that the EPA was going to be funding this, wouldn't you think that that would have been important information that this council should have known?
Councilman Harding, it was always the intention to utilize or the objective to find grant funds to pay for this plan. What would happen if those funds were not available would be, I would ask financial, the Finance Department, since it's a budgetary issue. But in my defense, I feel we have communicated the anticipation of these funds with council staff and council members. It's also important that we don't supplant our ability to receive federal funding by claiming one source of funding before those funds have been accepted by council, or before we've received an award letter from the federal agency issuing those funds. And we had not received that from the Department of Energy. And the EPA funding opportunity felt more secure. We had more information on it, and that came available. Or the notice was public in March, and we continued to learn more and apply and wait for those funds.
Wow. We were presented something, I guess I'm surprised that that's the way we do business, that we are asking for approvals on plans and to pay for them without having, I guess I'm more surprised at that, that we didn't, that we didn't have it. And I fault myself for maybe not asking that question back in March. But I was led to believe that we had the Department of Energy's grant in place to fund the HDR and Pale Blue Dot's consulting fees. So I find myself in a very odd position, in that if we don't approve this, then it really, it's an additional expense to our taxpayers of $380,000, because we've obligated, we've made that obligation to HDR and Pale Blue Dot. And I doubt the city would ever want to default on that agreement. So congratulations. I understand that that's how we're going to pay for it now. But I will say one other thing, and I guess you could say, and look, see, I'm being open-minded, too. I think I've been convinced that I don't think I have, you know, that there's not much choice here. So, but I will say, and I wanted to, I know we've heard it repeated, that there's no, there's no cost to this down the line. But let me read out of, out of the agreement, the EPA agreement, or the acceptance form. And this is on page seven, paragraph three. It says, "A status report due at the closeout of the four-year grant period. This report should include the implementation status of the quantified GHDG reduction measures included in the CCAP, the Comprehensive Climate Action Plan, any relevant update, analysis, or projections supporting CCAP implementation, and next steps, and future budget staffing needs to continue CCAP implementation." So understanding that we've clarified that this is not committing anything in the future, that this is just changing the funding mechanism or the funding source for what we approved in March, but I want to, I want to make sure that everyone understands that, as Councilmember Melton said, that it's likely that some of the implementation that's going to come out of this plan, that we're going to have to consider, and I'm not going to be in favor of, if it's going to add cost to development or cost to provide workforce or affordable housing, I'm not going to, that's going to be hard for me to approve. But I, I think I'm in a situation where, you know, if we don't, if we don't agree to this, then it's coming out of the city's general fund. And let me ask you this, and I don't know that you can answer, but is the Department of Energy funding mechanism or source available still?
We would need to get a clarification on if it's still available.
But we don't have the time to do that, because we have to approve this today.
This is, again, a tailor-made grant for what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Thank you, Marco.
Ms. Melton?
Yeah, Mary. I just wanted to say, I, listen, I walked in here not wanting to vote for this and planning to really vote no, because of, I worry about the forced implementation later. Because I'm sure later someone will say, well, we spent the million, so now we have to do everything they say. I completely agree with Councilman Harding. 100% agree. What I'm hoping, though, is that at least our general fund money that comes from property taxes and sales taxes of our citizens is not going to go for this. And that, in addition, the EPA is paying for somebody that we know, somebody in the Planning Department, that I at least will be working with, and it's not somebody from the outside coming in and telling us. So I'm hoping that what this is going to do is kind of make sure we have a check and balance on this plan and how it's being implemented. Might, might give me more insight than I thought I ever had before, or at least it gave me the idea, and now we have the commitment from planning to be able to have those, those regular meetings. So maybe we will do a plan that's not, maybe we'll have to challenge Pale Blue Dot, and they're not going to be able to cut and paste their plan for us. We might be able to make our own that'll work best for our community. So, thank, thank you, Councilman Harding.
Thanks. I think I may be the last speaker in the queue, so I'll keep this short. But I've been working on this issue for over two years now, so I am supportive of what we're doing here today. One of the previous speakers said this is long overdue, and I'd agree with that. Most major cities have already done a comprehensive plan. Most major cities are already implementing a comprehensive plan. Lincoln, for example, is already well on their way. So I wish we were further along, but I am encouraged by the million-dollar grant. I'm also encouraged by the fact that it includes deadlines now. We've never previously had deadlines into this effort. This grant specifying that a priority plan must be done by March 2024, and that a comprehensive plan must be done by August 2025, and a commitment by the Mayor's Office that public engagement starts in September and will be heavily engaged by the end of the year. That's a critical component of this plan. So I was pleased to hear that. And it does fund the contracts, and it does fund an FTE. I also think that's critical, and that's best practice anywhere you go. This has to be somebody's job to facilitate this plan. And yes, later, I think once you have a plan, and once you've agreed upon what's to be implemented, it does take a person to manage that program of work going forward. That's not part of this grant at the moment, but I wanted to make that point, too. That's a best practice in sustainability that I think we're going to have to think about in the future, in a future budget. about in the future, in a, in a future budget. And of course, the public engagement is a critical component of what else is funded by this grant. And there is no local match, as you mentioned. I think that's a big benefit as well. And it is accurate to say, as, as Councilmember Melton said, that should this grant not be accepted, this does become a local expense. So I see no downside in accepting the grant to prevent that from happening, and to prevent further delay from occurring, which has already occurred, much too long from my perspective. And so I hope the plan ultimately has some aspirational goals, like most plans do, carbon net neutrality by a certain timeframe. Lincoln has an ambitious goal by 2040, for example. But then also some really common sense, short-term action steps we can take out of a plan like this, that might be things like increased recycling, or it might be continue to change your LED lights, your, your traffic lights to LED to save electricity and to save expense. It might be to relocate and upgrade our composting operations, which we should do. It might be to expand electric vehicle stations across the city more than we have. Things like that, that I think are very practical in nature and actually save the city money, in addition to doing the right thing from a sustainable, sustainability perspective. So those, that's what I hope the outcomes eventually are. But today is very simple. We're just accepting the grant to be able to get there, to engage the public and everyone on this plan, to hopefully come to consensus on what those items are, and what we can move on, uh, work on together. Lastly, I'd just say I do appreciate the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce being here. I, I do think this is a workforce issue, in addition to being an environmental issue. I think young people really care about this issue, and to attract our future workforce, I think we must show that sustainability is a core value. I'll finish by saying I want to thank Marco for getting us to this point. I know it's been difficult having this only be a part of your duties, so I appreciate the work you've done on it. And I do look forward to working with our designated planning person on this and, and the public to keep it moving forward. I spoke incorrectly. There are more lights. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you. I did, I did want to say one last thing, and I, I think you brought it to my attention. I want to make sure that we do appreciate Marco's work, that, that is, we do appreciate what you've done on that. I do want to make sure that we all know that we need to hold Pale Blue Dot accountable to a robust community engagement. We can't just say we're going to have a meeting and, and show up in every council district and, and think that that's going to be good enough. We have to make sure that our, our constituents have input into this plan, good, bad, and ugly. I mean, it's, we just need to get all the information that we can. And I just wanted to make sure that that was an expectation, at least it is of mine, that, that our, our communication to our constituents has to be over the top on this, on this particular plan, and as all of them. But we can't come back and say, oh, well, we wish we'd have done more. We have to make sure we do everything we can to get community involvement in, in the development of the plan.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Two final things. Again, Marco, I, I too appreciate your, as I said earlier, your standing up here and answering our questions. Again, I wish it would have been, you know, like I had requested to, you know, maybe have a briefing along the line. So, but, I mean, these are the, these are the spirited questions and responses and investigations and analysis that I think we as a body need to go through in order to make these decisions. So I, I was just hopeful that maybe it could have been done sooner. But I do, I do appreciate you answering our questions. The other, one other thing is, Pete, you almost got me to change my vote. I mean, you're, you're throwing in conclusions already, and I don't know that those are the necessarily, those will be the conclusions that come out of the report,
Thank you. There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Bagley.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
One public hearing can be held for items 55 and 56. Item 55, an ordinance to repeal several sections of Chapter 20, Article 7, Division 1 and 2 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding firearms and weapons. Item 56, an ordinance to amend various sections of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding firearms and weapons.
We'll have one public hearing on items 55 and 56. They will require separate votes. We'll start with a brief presentation about why we're here from Mr. Kuzey, and I believe a representative of the Omaha Police Department. Mr. Kuzey, you're recognized.
Matt Kuzey, City of Omaha's Law Department. We are here on two items before the council. First one deals with the repeal of approximately 22 ordinances. As the council is aware, LB-77 was passed by the legislature and signed into law by the governor. It goes into effect, I believe, this Saturday, September 3. As I've indicated to the council before in communications that I've had with you, LB-77 strips away the city's ability to have any regulation over the ownership, possession, storage, transportation, sale, and transfer of firearms or other weapons. They deem that a matter of statewide concern. The legislature went on to say that any ordinance in conflict with that language is null and void. So given the impending enactment of LB-77, the Law Department and the Police Department went through the code to find those ordinances that conflict with the language of LB-77. This was done by Mr. Heepok on my office, Mr. Slump, the city prosecutor, the Omaha Police Department, and myself as well. And what you have in the first agenda item for consideration is my strike through of all of those ordinances. Those ordinances include carrying concealed weapon, the possession or transportation of firearms, the sale of firearms to minors, possessions of machine guns, the unlawful possession of a concealed firearm, and our registration requirements. There's some other ordinances in there as well that are tied to those specific ordinances. And given the enactment of LB-77, it's imperative, I think, on the city to not leave those laws in the books. I think it is disingenuous for us to allow our citizens to believe that these laws are active, so that when they see what will happen as a result of LB-77, and might cause them alarm, and they want to call the Police Department, they need to be aware that the Police Department today can maybe do something about, something that they see, but on Saturday cannot. With regard to the other agenda item, that's really just a cleanup. We went through and found those ordinances where firearms were kind of tangentially mentioned, such as with regard to the Administrative Board of Appeals, there was a separate fee for appealing a firearm registration denial by the chief. That obviously won't apply anymore. There's two regulations regarding disaster preparedness that allow the mayor, in a state of emergency, to take action on limiting firearms. That's stricken out of there. And then it also renumbered those remaining ordinances related to firearms that the Law Department believes are not applicable to LB-77 and still can remain on the books. Prior to LB-77's enactment, this city, as well as all cities in the state of Nebraska, were allowed to have such regulations. The legislature has determined that it's statewide concern, and only the state of Nebraska can speak on these regulations. So that is the reason for the complete repeal of those 22 ordinances and the amendments to the other three ordinances. I am here, the Police Department cannot be present. I've spoken to Chief Schmoder beforehand, and I can attempt to answer any questions the council may have regarding the Police Department. Mr. Slump is here as well, as kind of a subject matter expert for everything I've forgotten about criminal prosecution, to help as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, that was a presentation as a proponent. Are there any other proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Dick Clark, D-I-C-K, C-L-A-R-K. I'm here representing Senator Tom Brewer, 1445 K Street, in our state's capital. I want to thank the council for taking action on this. Think it is imperative. I agree with the city attorney that it would be disingenuous to leave an ordinance on the books that didn't have the force of law, and that could cause public confusion. And I just wanted to make myself available to answer any questions as the principal architect of LB-77. One minor note, we believe based on what the Reviser of Statutes has told us, that the effective date is actually September 2. So with that, be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon. My name's Oren Digman, 4373 South 154th Street here in Omaha. And I'd just like to thank the council for repealing these ordinances. I was involved in the petition process back in 1988 when the constitutional amendment, state one, put this in, in action. I was surprised it took this long, but I'm glad that it finally has come to the point where the City of Omaha is now in compliance with the federal state constitutions. And I'd like to thank you for, for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Louis T. Menes, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm against this due for the public safety aspect of this. Very violent crimes are committed through the firearms use, and it was incumbent of, for the city to pass extra measures for public safety. And I won't get into the politics of Nebraska, having the legislator come in, Nebraska legislator come in and tell us here in Omaha what to do. But it's happened in other aspects to public life. And I oppose this because of the hierarchy of laws. The constitution can allow or disallow something, and, and then the state constitution, state sta, uh, US statutes, Nebraska statutes, you know, the hierarchy of law are, have, are a part of, of the legality of policy. And prior to this passage, the Omaha Municipal Codes do not infringe on citizens' rights to bear arms. But now we have state statutes that says, we don't like the look of Omaha. So people like Senator Brewer and his colleagues outstate have to meddle in, in this, and that's just unfortunate. I hope that if indeed the state legislator is serious about this being a state matter, that they then look at urban populations and safeties, and look at the, the codes that Mr. Kuzey is suggesting that you remove, and enact those in state law for the purpose of urban areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. First of all, we are a republic, and we do have a constitution. The US Constitution supersedes the Nebraska Constitution, which a lot of people think needs to be rewritten. And there are certain rights, right to carry, right to self-defense. I'm against this resolution. I think we need to let the state sort this out by themselves and keep the Omaha Municipal Code out of it. We do not supersede the state or federal laws, and we do not supersede my rights on constitutional carry. So maybe reword it, scratch both of them, and maybe scratch the Omaha Municipal Code. And don't listen to people that are on the left of the spectrum. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I was just going to quickly clarify. I could call our attorney back up, and I'm only going to ask him to stand up if I say something wrong. Um, we, you're prepared for that? You only used to be my old boss. You're not my boss anymore, right?
All true.
Um, I just want to say, basically, Ms. Store, what we are doing is we are scratching the code. That's exactly what we're voting on today. Where everything in the code is being crossed out that has anything to do with the regulation of firearms, because as you stated, the state law does preempt our city ordinances. So what the council's voting on today, it's not about whether you support the LB-77 or, or Senator Brewer. This is about it passed. So we have to scratch out, cross out the code, eliminate these provisions of our code, because we would not be in compliance with state law. So we're required, really are, we are required to do it. If we did nothing, as I think Mr. Kuzey said, that's wrong for the public, because the public will look up, especially now, it's real easy to look up our city code by punching it in. And I, I think it's bad for, number one, for police officers who are going through training, and here's the code, and this is what you can and cannot arrest people for. Oh, but the city just goes, goes ahead and leaves stuff in there that says you can arrest them, but you really can't. So what that's going to do is potentially subject people to criminal charges that won't get dismissed until somebody from Mr. Slump's office, who does know that we have laws that shouldn't be there, and then dismisses them. Well, that is not the way that you should have a code. That's not the way we should run our police department. That's not the way we should run our city. So whether we agree with getting rid of these or not, it's not our choice. It was already done. It, it was done by the state legislature. So this is one where we, we have no choice. Your choice is voting to leave laws on the books that people could get arrested then for, when they didn't do it. So that could lead to lawsuits against the city too. So I, that's just the, that's just where, where we're at in the City of Omaha. So, Mr. Kuzey, I mean, really, if we were to say, well, we don't like the state law, so we're just going to go ahead and vote no, that's just completely irresponsible, even whether you like it or not. Yeah, we've got to get rid of the laws that the state legislature said we have to get rid of.
Matt Kuzey, Law Department, two things. One thing I would like to clarify is, these laws are up for you to be repealed. Because of LB-77, there's been an assertion made out there that they conflict with the federal constitution and the state constitution. The Law Department doesn't agree with that assessment, neither have our courts. So it's not being repealed because of an interpretation of the Second Amendment or the similar provision in the Nebraska Constitution. It's being repealed, or it's being asked to be repealed because of what LB-77 says. So that's one point of clarification with regard to your question, is if the council chooses to keep these laws on the book, that's certainly the council's prerogative, but they will be unenforceable by the Police Department. And if someone were to get arrested, you are correct, that could expose us to issues, and Mr. Slump's office would not prosecute anybody for this offense.
But it, but it even puts prosecutors, I mean, it even puts, wait, which laws are the real ones and which laws aren't? I mean, so what, are the prosecutors going to have to have their own set of codes?
Right.
So that they know what the council should have crossed out because we can't have it, and what they don't? To me, that's, that, that just, that doesn't seem like a good way to do business. I don't think it's something that we should ask our prosecutors to practice in, to create their own codebooks.
And to Mr. Slump's credit, he has spoken to all the prosecutors on there, and he's been working quite closely with the Police Department, because there's also, you know, hundreds of police officers who have to be retrained and reeducated on this, because I teach one of their classes in the academy about city ordinances, and we talk about the weapons offenses. So all the police officers are going to have to have a different way of thinking when they encounter these types of situations. And Mr. Slump has been working with the Police Department on updating their training in that regard.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kuzey. Thank you. Mr. Bagley?
Thanks, Mr. President. Ms., Councilmember Melton always asks one or two questions, so I can scratch them off my list. Matt, if you can pop back up, you're getting your steps or exercise going in and out of your chair. You provided an excellent memo to the council, and I read it on my phone, and I'm one of these guys that likes to get the paper printed off and read it two or three times in front of me so I can understand it. And you, you and I had a conversation. Let me simplify again what Councilmember Melton said. Let me simplify again what Councilmember Melton said. If we don't vote to repeal these 22 ordinances, tell me again what happens if hypothetically we don't repeal these. And with that said, I know, also, two-part question. This council, we are creatures of the state and Nebraska legislature, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if you can answer the first part of my question, just so I'm crystal clear what happens if we do not vote to repeal these 22 ordinances?
Matt Koozie, City of Omaha Law Department, then the ordinances will remain on the books, and as Ms. Melton indicated, our ordinances now are easily located on the internet for people to look, and they will remain on the books in our code, but completely unenforceable. And the concern which I've expressed, and I think is also the concern of mayor's office, the police department, everybody who signed the cover letters of these ordinances, that gives the public this impression that the laws are in effect and that they can count on the Omaha Police Department and the city prosecutor's office to enforce these laws when that is not the case. So whether they're voted to be repealed or not, these laws will be completely ineffective come now that I'm told September 2nd.
Okay. And being that this council and this city are creatures of the legislature with Mr. Clark that's here today on behalf of Senator Brewer, in essence, what the 49 senators, whoever the majority of them supported and was signed by the governor, that effectively is Lincoln telling Omaha how we can apply or can't apply gun ordinances? Is that fair to say?
This is the state legislature preempting the city of Omaha, well, and all cities across Nebraska, from having any legislation dealing with the possession, transportation, storage, ownership. There's a couple of other verbs that I can't remember with regards to firearms. They are preempting our authority to do that.
So the local control is gone, the legislature decided that for us?
Correct. The city of Omaha will no longer have local control over these matters.
Okay. And can you give me an example, Mr. Koozie, of, I had a cross off September 3rd and it's September 2nd, as was said and corrected. So if somebody gets pulled over in the city of Omaha tonight with a gun on the seat, how is that different now than when the law goes into effect, when we take all these ordinances off, we vote to repeal them?
Well, as I've indicated to the council, that this law is going to have a fundamental impact on how law enforcement deals with firearms. And as I said, Mr. Slim's been working with the Omaha Police Department, and he's been working with all the other law enforcement agencies within Douglas County, but with regard to the Omaha Police Department, you know, it's going to change things. If, since you asked, we'll use you as the example, if you are pulled over for a traffic violation, you know, not signaling your turn, too wide a turn, speeding, whatever, and today, if the police pull you over and they encounter a firearm sitting right there in your passenger seat, there are certain things that the police can do. It creates what's called probable cause, and they would be allowed to conduct a further examination and search your vehicle for other evidence of potential crimes. That's what they can do today. Come Friday or Saturday, whatever day the second is, that changes what the police can do. Now, the police don't automatically have that probable cause if that gun is there. They might have to just let that person go, and I'm sure what will be going through the officer's mind is also, I'm letting this person go who has a gun there. I certainly hope that they're not going to go and commit some sort of violent crime with it. I'm not saying that that's typical of what would happen, but that is going to be the new reality that the Omaha Police Department and other law enforcement agencies in Douglas County and across the state will have to confront when this becomes effective.
Thank you for that. And the chief is in here, nobody from OPD, but the chief did testify against LB-77. Is that correct? You're going to speak for him today?
He did, and I've spoken to the chief on a number of occasions and his command staff about what the concerns that the Omaha Police Department has with LB-77. And they were outlined in the chief's testimony in opposition to this bill and in other outlets where he's expressed his opposition to this. And the concern that the chief has is, there was a reg... Well, currently is, but there will soon not be a registration requirement, and there was value in that registration because the Omaha Police Department had certain criteria on the ordinance for which somebody could be denied a registration. Prior felonies, crimes of domestic violence, things that are existing in state law and in federal law. The other kind of concern that the police department is going to have is that the open carry of not just firearms, but long guns, rifles, machine, whatever, not machine guns, but semi-automatic weapons, whatever you want to affirm, could lead to some public alarm, which has occurred in the city of Omaha on occasion when people have walked around with long guns and at secured facilities and things like that. Their concern is that that could continue to escalate. I've already discussed the probable cause concern that the police are going to have. And there's an officer safety component to it as well. Currently, in order to get your carrying concealed permit, you have to, you're required to take a class where gun safety and gun operation is discussed. The concern that the Omaha Police Department has is that they will be encountering more people who don't have that sort of training, because while it being offered, it's voluntary, it's not required. And in a city of 500,000 people, I think the Omaha Police Department's concern is not if they're going to encounter one of these kind of situations that we've talked about that's a result of us having to get rid of our ordinances, it's more, I think, of when this is going to happen and how the public is going to react to this, because the police have also said the concern is what is illegal today won't be illegal on September 2nd, and the public may not know that, and they're going to be calling the Omaha Police Department for help if they see something that is alarming to them. And the police are going to show up, and they're not going to be able to do anything about it.
Thanks, Matt, for your answers, and I want to thank you again for taking the time to walk me through the many questions I had about your memo that clarified things for me, as you did here today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, as well as other members in my community, are concerned about the impact this law, LB-77, which was enacted on April 19 by the legislator. We're concerned about the impact that this will have on our community for obvious reasons. However, again, this law was passed, and therefore, this motion that's being presented to us today is just to create an environment in which we will be in compliance with the state law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, I might have you, before you leave the dais there, gauge a little bit. He's getting a drink. No problem. I think Mr. Koozie did do a good job of explaining why it is we're here and why this is necessitated as a result of the passage of LB-77. But I find it very concerning, and I think that's exactly why the mayor and the majority of the council and the police chief were opposed to LB-77. I don't think it does recognize that cities face a different situation, and it does not allow for local control on these matters. And so to repeal these sections, 22 sections of the code, I think are not helpful to our situation here for public safety. And I think the police chief felt the ordinances in place were helpful in addressing illegal guns in the streets. I believe the number he quoted today was, it played some part in removing about 1,400 illegal guns off the street last year. So to me, this is concerning, but I realize we must do what the state law prescribes today. Recognizing that, though, I did request that the law department look into options under this new state law and its prescriptions in terms of what else can we be doing to address these issues or to address common sense gun regulation in the city. And I think your initial findings would indicate there are some things we can work on regardless of this repeal today. Things like regulating ghost guns, potential implements like bump stocks like Lincoln has, and certainly protect and prohibit concealed carry in our public places, things like parks and libraries and this building, our event centers, Mecca, for example. I believe it's your interpretation that can in fact be done, and is your recommendation that we go ahead and do that? So I say those things to indicate that those are things I'm interested in working on together with you and the police department and the council and the mayor to see what it is we can now proceed with in lieu of what we had in place already. A couple last questions for you regarding public places. I believe you have advised that the mayor do issue an executive order to prohibit possession of concealed firearms on city properties and facilities, and that that executive order is pending.
LB-77, Matt Koozie Law Department. LB-77 does allow the owner or use of leased properties to prohibit the possession of concealable firearms on their premises. That is applicable to the city of Omaha, that's also in LB-77, and many of the state senators down in Lincoln during the debates on these bills did emphasize that point. So it is the mayor's intent to issue an executive order to prohibit the possession of concealed firearms on city-owned property, facilities, things of that nature. And a plan has been developed and is currently underway with the Parks Department and Public Works Department primarily to, we've got the sign language, because we have to have what's called conspicuous notice, and we are working on implementing and placing those signs, primarily that places that the public uses first before we start whittling it down to other locations that the city owns that are not typically used or accessed by the public. With regard to this building, this building is owned and operated by the Building Commission. If I'm wrong, Bernard will come down here. By the Building Commission, this building is also considered a courthouse, since there are Douglas County courtrooms located on the floor below us. So there are provisions that already exist in state law that prohibit the possession of weapons in courthouses, police stations, schools, financial institutions. I'm sure Mr. Clark could probably rattle off the remaining list, but those places are already excluded as well. But in terms of what the city's plan is for the property that we own or lease, the mayor has, when she is back in Omaha, will sign an executive order to that effect.
And will that occur prior to September 2nd?
Yes. I suspect it will occur tomorrow.
Good. Thank you. I think that's important. And it does require signage, then, pretty much at all of our parks and new signage throughout the city in that respect.
The law department worked with primarily Public Works to develop this universal signage that we would use at all of our facilities. It's simple and to the point is, I think, how I would describe it and probably how Mr. Stube would describe it and Mr. Kalsovich as well. It's simple, direct, to the point, and that will be used at all of our locations.
And there's already an executive order in place that prohibits concealed carry or any bringing of a weapon to work at any city facility with very few exceptions. Is that an accurate statement?
It's not an executive order, it's an HR policy, but there is an HR policy that exists and has existed for a good couple of years. I don't recall how old it is, but there is an HR policy that exists that prohibits city employees from having guns at work unless you receive permission from the mayor or your law enforcement.
Thank you. Thanks for your review of this issue, and I look forward to working with you on future possibilities. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Sorry. Thanks, Mr. President. I don't like to follow you when you wrap up your remarks, but Matt, I had one more question for you.
How about Kevin? Does anybody have any questions for Kevin?
Apologize that I didn't, when I had my opening questions for you. Correct me if I'm wrong, in 2022, the year of our Lord, there was 459 charges, is that correct, by the city prosecutor?
The numbers I got, sorry, Matt Koozie Law Department, the numbers I got from the prosecutor's office was, and we only looked at those offenses that are being affected by this repeal ordinance, was that in 2022, there were 342 charges or convictions?
Convictions, I think is what I moved down.
And then, as of August 1st, 2023, there have been 117. So it's been a total of 459. So that's all of 22, and then through August 1st of this year.
Okay. So is it fair to say that the fuzzy math that you just gave me the answer to was 459 charges by the city prosecutor?
Yes.
For those two years?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. So when September 2nd goes into effect and these are, if they're wiped off the books, we're not going to have any more, we're not going to be charging people anymore for these things that we've done for the last two years plus?
It's Mr. Slim's intent, and since the ordinances will either be repealed or ineffective, that cases will be prosecuted up until September 2nd.
Right.
But after then, those charges will no longer be pursued, and not to speak for Mr. Slim, but I will. It's also my understanding that his position is that any case that is pending, as in hasn't been sentenced on, that those cases will have to be dismissed.
Okay. Thanks.
And I don't know how many that number is.
Nope, that's fine. And is it, question for you then, is after this happens, do you think that the community will be safer or less safe after this?
I can't give that answer, and even if Tifshmater were standing here, we can't give that answer. It's going to be a wait and see. I think it is a logical statement to make that not having these laws, I'm not going to say will make it less safe. I consider that, it's a loaded term for someone who's not a policymaker.
I'm not trying to get to you.
To use. No, I know you're not. I don't, I think it's going to have an effect on law enforcement and law enforcement's ability to respond, to react and solve crimes.
Thanks, Matt.
And that's probably what the chief would say if he was here, too.
Fair enough. And that is, again, to stress that as because of the bill passed by the legislature, signed by the governor, that's why we're even having this discussion today.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Item 55? Separate votes.
Oh, sorry, I forgot that there were two. Yeah, move to approve, agenda item 55.
There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Move to approve, agenda item 56.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 57, an ordinance to approve the Laramore Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 57 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any... Oh, go ahead. Are you a proponent, Larry?
Yeah, I'm going to switch my...
Okay.
Here.
All right, go for it.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm in favor of this one, because it's vacant property. Probably does need to be developed. That's what its laws designed, intent for, the original intent. However, last week, the flip charts that we were given, all of a sudden, we got flip charts for TIF to try and explain it to us, dummies, I guess is the word. But it doesn't really go far enough in explaining it. I get it that somebody buys the property maybe at a blighted value and pays that flat, maybe pays that fat, flat tax, which is lower than it was before, probably, for 15 years. But what you guys don't get is, from our side of the podium, our citizens that don't understand that very well, see that as a big break for a developer. He maybe goes in and tells you he's going to make an application for TIF so you go blight some property, lower the value of it. He gets the lower value for 15 years, and maybe he gets a loan, maybe he gets city participation. Some of these are city participation, some aren't. So us poor taxpayers don't really understand the whole thing, but it looks like a Wimpyburger. Hey, I'll gladly pay you tomorrow for a hamburger today, or 15 years from now, or 25 years from now, when you raise my property tax rates. And yeah, maybe the new owner, if it is a new owner, will pay the blighted value rate on the property, which is maybe lower than it was a couple of days ago, but for 14, 15 years, maybe 20. years, maybe 20. But somehow, somebody is losing some tax value on most of these projects. Maybe there hasn't been anybody owning this property. So that raises the question, well, is this what the Omaha Land Bank is about? Who gets that property all of a sudden and is the owner or the developer? That's never decided, that's never explained. So I'm going to cut it short. My point is, it's still not transparent enough for the average taxpayer, home, home property taxpayer, I should say, home bodies and taxpayer, just seems like a scam still. It's not quite clear enough that it's not. So I'm going to submit some things for the record. I did send an email, which I'll give you a copy of that, but I also want to give you some documents from Taxpayers for Freedom, who have talked to you before. These are all for the record to try and explain to you why things are still a big blur for the taxpayer and we think we're being hoodwinked. Maybe we're not. But that is up to you people to take all this information and prove us wrong. Just real quickly here, here's one, these are not my words, these are other five or six different sources. Here's one tax document.
Finance for dummies. These are opposing.
Let's have you submit those and go back to the podium.
Open sky policy in the State House. Call me out on word.
You're getting close.
It's all submitted for.
Let's summarize.
Okay, thank you.
Any other proponents on number 57? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 58, an ordinance to approve the Blue Stent Prairie Second Edition Phase One and Two Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 58 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have. I don't know if you want me to address anything, probably not, but there is plenty of information on the website, our TIF website, and there will be more to come in the future.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Ken Marr with Habitat for Humanity, 1701 North 24th Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 59, an ordinance to approve the Forever North Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 59 is today. Proponents, please.
Sorry, that's me. Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Hello, Ashley Kuhn on behalf of the applicant, 4616 Dodge Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 60, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the city of Milford to establish and operate Big Red Keno satellite locations.
Public hearing on number 60 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 61, an ordinance to approve the Restated Memorandum of Agreement for the Professional Firefighters Association of Omaha Local 385 Health Trust Establishment.
Public hearing on 61 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bree Robbins, Labor Relations Director.
Mark McQueen, Baird Home Law Firm. Bree and I negotiated this agreement with Local 385. This is a latest evolution of a fire trust that was set up in 2016 to provide health insurance for the firefighters. We've separated the negotiations for the cost to the city of this particular health insurance coverage by design. We thought that it would be helpful to separate this particular term from the renewal negotiations for the larger contract that actually began this morning. So this is a four-year deal. In the first year, which begins in January 2024, we provide for what the premiums that the city is obligated to pay and the employees, the firefighters are obligated to pay, there's a premium freeze in this upcoming calendar year, so that's good news for everybody. In the three years following that, the premiums for the city will increase by a maximum of 13% and perhaps as low as 10 and 1/2%. There's 2 and 1/2% variance that will either occur or not occur based on whether the trust declares what is known as a premium holiday during the term of this agreement. Premium holiday is, is an item that is described in the trust agreement, and essentially, if the assets in the trust hit a certain level that's defined by the trust, the trust has the authority to declare a premium so that the city doesn't have to pay its premiums and the employees don't have to pay the premiums. If that happens during the course of this agreement, it may increase the city's contribution by 2 and 1/2% and decrease the employees' contribution by 2 and 1/2%. Either way you cut it, the premium increases are very attractive for most employers who typically expect a premium increase on health insurance of much greater than 3 and 1/4%. That's the worst-case scenario for the city on average over the course of these three years or four years, and it may be as low as 2.6%. And besides the premium increases in the premium holiday language, we updated the trust language, it's quite a lengthy document, and we also increased the subsidy that the union pays to the city for retirees who are excluded from this particular coverage because of the date of their retirement in 2010. There's a small group left in that category that are still insured by the city, roughly 45 or 44 employees. So that's sum and substance what this agreement is all about. We're respectfully asking for your approval for this agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any other proponents? I was wondering who these guys were in the back. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council, Trevor Towey, President, 385, 6005 Grover Street. I'll just echo the comments of Mr. McQueen and thank him and Ms. Robbins in the mayor's office for working with us to get this agreement. I just also wanted to point out that this is the third time that this, we've been able to reach agreement in regards to how firefighters' healthcare trust is managed. The last time it was approved, it was approved without objection from the council. This agreement now is really, as Mark just pointed out, mostly about premium increases, but it's also the cheapest and least expensive increase that we've ever had. My opinion, I liken that to the success of the trust, and even though it's unlike other healthcare plans for other employee groups, it's made firefighters really smart consumers of healthcare. It's kept prices down, and it's enabled us, both the city and the firefighters, to be good stewards of taxpayers' money. So with that, I'm happy about the agreement, and I hope for your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, is your light on?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Trevor, a quick question for you.
Trevor Towey, 385, 6005 Grover.
Good afternoon, thanks for coming down today. Remind me again, how long has it been in effect that you guys have had your own trust?
2016.
So going on seven years, and your members obviously are approving this.
Yeah, they've been very happy with it for the most part. It's taken a little bit of work on their part, just because of the different rules that we put in place, but like I said, if we're smart with being consumers of healthcare, it allows us to keep the benefit structure the way it is.
I got to applaud you guys. I know when your predecessor, when they negotiated this, is a vice president currently of a union, I don't know if I would have had, I'll have to be politically correct here, the guts to do what you guys did, and clearly with Mr. McQueen here getting in agreement with labor and management on this, that it's working well, and I got to commend you guys. I was skeptical of it when I had heard about it, and I shook my head, but I'm not shaking my head anymore. I think you guys, this is a great thing for the taxpayers, but mostly your membership that keeps, it's tough to educate members or employees on what their healthcare plan is, and this major members, I think, I'm not speaking for you, but it's fair to say that it, it made them better stewards of their healthcare plan, fair to say. Okay.
No, and I appreciate that, and you know, we've always felt that providing our workers with the best benefits possible is important, and we're not afraid to work for it, and we've been putting in that work, and I think it shows for both the city and for our members.
Thanks, Trevor. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
And Mark and Bree, thanks for the work you put in, because I know we got briefings in HR, and I think things were going well, as evident by what we have here today, so thanks to both of you as well. Thanks, Ms. President.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
Item 62, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Professional Firefighters Association of Omaha Local 385 Special Pay 401A Plan and Health Reinforcement Arrangement.
Good afternoon, Bernard Inabash, Deputy City Attorney. The cover page grant is kind of self-explanatory. This is a kind of a tweak of what we adopted last year to fix an unintended consequence. Something the union approached us about doing, we didn't have any objection to doing it, because this deals with money that the firefighters are entitled to when they retire, so happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Trevor Towey, 385, 6005 Grover Street. I'll just add that, you know, because of our last topic, this issue has made our members such smart consumers of healthcare that we realized we need to have that money there when we retire to use on our healthcare. This is a program that does that. The previous ordinance, which implemented these two programs, was kind of flawed, where it only allowed us to represent one program and not allow us to get any money into our healthcare, which obviously is very important to our members. So these tweaks will provide for those changes and access to both programs, so I appreciate your approval on that.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Prefer we call for adjournment? I will just say, wish a Happy Labor Day to Local 385, and also all of our local unions and the council as well. Madam Kirk.
Non-action items, item 63 through 70 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Motion to adjourn? Second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President, motion passed, six to zero, meeting is adjourned at 4:42.